It is now 6:00 PM on September 17th, 2024. And I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Formal Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Alter, here. Bergus?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Harmsen?
Here.
Mo?
Here.
Saleh?
Here.
Teague?
Here. Well, welcome to your City Hall, to everybody that's here in this room with us and virtually. Hello. We're going to move on to item number two, which is Proclamations 2A as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize the contributions of Hispanic Americans and to celebrate Hispanic heritage and culture. And whereas each year, the federal government and local governments observe National Hispanic Heritage Month as the period from September 15th to October 15th by recognizing and celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of persons whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas September 15th is significant as a starting date for Hispanic Heritage Month because it's the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September 16th and September 18th respectfully. And whereas Latinx have made innumerable contributions to the Iowa City community, and it is important the city recognize and celebrate the diverse histories and cultures of the Latinx population. And whereas the Latinx community is integral to our city with business owners and residents alike who are proud to be a part of the Latinx community but hope for greater visibility, recognition, and representation. And whereas the City of Iowa City continually strives to foster mutual understanding and respect among all persons. And whereas this observance affords special opportunities to become more knowledgeable about Hispanic heritage and to honor the many Hispanics who have contributed to the progress of Iowa City, the state, and the nation, now therefore I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2024 through October 15th, 2024, to be National Hispanic Heritage Month. And to receive this proclamation is Manny Galvez, Iowa City Latino Fest Founder and Director, accepting this proclamation.
So also, I want to mention, Señora Trini is with us today. She's one of, also, for us in Iowa City, the most important to mention, say, oh, how you can do this is because there's many women, like, so powerful, like her. It's not the only one, but it's one of these, several ones here in town for more than 10 years, building and making a difference in our community.
Bueno, primero que nada, yo creo que Manuel me va a traducir.
Yeah, I will translate.
Quiero dar gracias a Dios por la vida y por darme este don, porque yo lo miro así, como un don que él me da. Quiero dar gracias también a mi familia, siempre me ha apoyado, y a Manuel por la oportunidad que nos dan en los festivales. Él nunca me había preguntado qué es lo que vas a presentar, y tiene la confianza de decirle, esto es lo que, al momento de estar ahí, lo presento, y siempre me ha reconocido eso, siempre me ha apoyado, y me dice, es tú, perfecto, estuvo bien, y gracias Manuel, sobre todo.
First, I want to say thank you, everybody. Thank you, God, for this opportunity. Thank you to my family, and thank you for Manny, because always he trusts what I'm going to do, and never, I mean, like, ask what I'm going to do, and he just trusts, and that made me feel so good, because of the trust.
Sí, solo quiero decirle a los padres que tienen hijos. A mí me gusta desde que estaba pequeña, pero nunca estudié, nunca tuve la oportunidad de tener clases de baile o de canto, o lo que fuera. Pero yo quiero decirle a los padres que si alguien tiene un hijo y le gusta algo, no se enfoquen en, por ejemplo, si son malos en matemáticas, no se enfoquen en un tutor para matemáticas. Enfoquense en lo que a él le gusta, de sacar lo mejor de ellos para que destaquen en lo que hacen. Y eso va a ser la felicidad. O sea, si eso es, para mí, me gusta lo que hago, y aparte, me pagan, para mí, eso es fabuloso. O sea, si yo lo hiciera de por vida, si fuera un trabajo, yo feliz, y yo quisiera que todos se enfocaran en sus hijos y darles la oportunidad en lo que les gusta.
Well, first, I want to say, like, I want to send a message to all the parents. If you have children, and maybe they are no good in math, maybe they can have another opportunities. For me, it's good to see, when I am doing these kind of activities in our community, and also, I didn't go, I didn't have the opportunity to go to the school. However, to see what is happening, and sometimes maybe receive a payment, is all, like, grateful to me in my life.
Yes, sí. No, pues creo que es todo. Muchas gracias, y gracias a todos ustedes por reconocerme. Nunca lo hubiera esperado cuando me dijo Manuel, y yo dije, de verdad? Le digo, no, pues muchas gracias, gracias a todos.
And, I mean, when Manny told me about this, I was, oh, my God, this is, I mean, for us, and say, okay, thank you so much to you guys. And just for me, just to close this moment, I mean, as always, I had this opportunity in public, I would say thank you to everybody. The most important thank you to the community in Iowa City, thank you, obviously, to the city, because we know what is the situation like we are right now, just knowing Iowa, but in the country. Latinos, Latinas, Latinx community have been in Iowa for more than 100 years. What is happening in this month is just to remember how important is diversity, how important is remember, like, this nation was built based in immigrants. So, no matter what happened, no matter what some people can say sometimes, we need to keep working so hard. To tell them, like, always, I say this, love, love always is going to win against hate. And I am sure we are so proud, and everything we do in this community is not because we want to highlight how different we are, it's because we want to show how amazing is diversity. This is the main goal of the, just not the festival, but all the Latino and the Latinx groups in the city. Thank you.
Thank you both. All right. And thanks to your family for being here as well.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, we're going to move on to items number three through eight. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Harmsen.
Second.
Mo.
And anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person. Oh, please.
Recording in progress.
That was me. Was I supposed to start a webinar?
For item number eight?
Yes, welcome. Please give your name and city you're from.
My name is Jeremiah Kurth.
And you'll receive three minutes. Welcome.
For item number eight, I would like to propose that it be limited to just certain days, rather than at any time. We have neighbors that regularly have guests on the weekend, and it would make parking very difficult if it was only on the street portion of the cul-de-sac and not, and not allowed to park around the circle. Also, we've never received flyers in the two years that we've lived there, so saying that the flyers have been ineffective when they haven't actually existed is kind of questionable. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. On that, anyone else like to address a topic? All right, seeing no one in person or online, council discussion.
I would like to talk about item 6D, the Burlington Street Bridge project, briefly. I'm incredibly excited about this project, and maybe that doesn't seem exciting that we're talking about a consultant agreement, because we're not even ready to see the bridge yet. But the reason I wanted to highlight this is because this bridge, or the actual two bridges that would be replaced in the, in the future, in a long time in the future, is a really, a key, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make good on both our strategic plan to sort of engage the Iowa River as well as the Better Together 2030 Plan. And that's because there's a big dam underneath that bridge, which prevents us from really utilizing the river. And I think that this is a potential opportunity to study what it would mean to get rid of that, that dam, and I think it'd benefit our city as well as the university and our waterfront. I know Public Works has, that put a lot of work into this consultant agreement, it's voluminous, if you guys saw that, over 100 pages of it. I don't know if there's any kind of timeframe or process where we'll get updates that you guys can tell us about.
Good evening. Jason Havel, City Engineer. So that's still yet to be determined. I think we'll, as we kind of start the process, start those conversations, figure out what, what time it makes sense to have a conversation with you on some of those pieces, but that's certainly part of the scope, we just don't know what that schedule is going to be at this time.
And when, yeah, when is design anticipated to be complete?
So this first phase is kind of the study phase in some of the environmental work. That's anticipated to last through the end of next year, so I would say, once we get past that point, then we would start the actual design.
Great. I'm very excited about it, so.
And it will be? It will be closed completely, right?
Say that again?
During construction. It will be, the, the street will be closed during the construction, completely.
During construction?
Uh-huh.
So that's part of what we'll look at, you know? We would like to keep it open as much as possible, you know? With there being two bridges, there may be some opportunity to keep some connectivity through construction, but again, those are details we'll really have to flesh out as we work through the design.
Yeah.
Anyway, thanks. I'm very excited about it, so.
And I'm pretty excited about it, too. You want to make us excited?
Any other discussion by council? Roll call, please.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. We are on to item number nine, which is a community comment time. And I see, is there anyone else that want to speak during this time? All right, yep. So please state your name and city you're from. There is a sign-in at the desk. Unless you have a sticker, you can throw it in the basket. Welcome. Up to three minutes.
Hey, Mayor, Council. Hope that bridge, that Burlington Bridge, is not the bridge to nowhere. How about a bridge on Highway 6? It's really difficult to cross that. It would bring the south side closer to downtown. That would make it easier. I don't like to cross it. I bike and everything's really hard. I'd like to bring up something about Dr. Martin Luther King. By 1968, Dr. Martin Luther King had come a long way from the crowds who cheered him on at the 1963 March on Washington, when he was introduced as the moral leader of our nation. By pursuing issues beyond simply that of segregation, he had lost much public support and was increasingly considered a pariah. He took on issues of poverty and militarism because he considered them vital to make equality something real and not just a racial brotherhood, but equality in fact. Dr. King followed the axiom of equality well beyond the single topic of racial segregation. He was campaigning on an anti-poverty, anti-war issue at the time of his death. He had spoken out against the Vietnam War. And when he was killed in Memphis in April of 1968, he was there in support of striking sanitation workers. As Melissa Harris-Lacewell put it, "Following Dr. King meant following the unpopular road and not the popular one." And today, as we look around at our own nation, I think Dr. King would have something to say about the very same issues that put him in the crosshairs of our establishment, which assassinated him. He would see that we have a trillion-dollar military, much bigger than that when he was alive, much bigger, bigger than the next 10 countries combined. He would see that we have 850-plus military bases across the globe. To put that into perspective, Russia, who we seem to be very afraid of, only has about 20. China, who we seem to have problems with, only has five, maybe six. We only have 4% of the world's population. The other 96% are probably not very happy that we're occupying their land. In the spirit of Dr. King, please support peace, please support equality, please tell our government, let's get out of places like Israel, Ukraine, Syria, Somalia, Yemen, and others. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome. Yep. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hello, my name is Fennec, and I'm from Correville, but I work here in Iowa City. For the last four and a half years, I have worked in a pipe shop that also sells kratom. And my coworkers, myself, and more importantly, my customers, are very worried about what happens if kratom is banned. I understand that there can be concerns about kratom or other products similar to it, especially when catchy names, like, what is it, gas station heroin, get thrown around for any number of supplements. But the truth of the matter is, there is a number of people in our community who have found an improved quality of life because they have access to a reliable, self-manageable product that can help address their pain, that can help them fight addictions, and helps them actually be able to participate in the things they need to and want to. I have people who work in all industries, who come and use it because they work long hours, and they don't have the time to let their bodies rest before they have to start again. So they need something to help with the pain and something that'll do so without making them too exhausted to function. I have people who come who have been dealing with chronic pain for years, who not only can't find work, but can barely have the energy and the gaps between that pain to do things like chores, grocery shopping, or even being with friends and family. But because they found something that they could get the same type of, know the variety, where it's coming from with lot numbers, and clear tracks of distribution, they have something that they can self-administer that allows them to function again. And there are a number of people here that are using kratom to help with addiction. Prescription painkillers and heroin are of course notable. Not only are they dangerous on their own, but also the fact that fentanyl now can be on anything that you're getting from who knows what source. But also, people who are fighting alcoholism. Just banning a product in a city does not address the reasons why people are using that product, and it does not help them when they need to find a different solution because the one they finally found is no longer adequately available. Some people can go to other cities, maybe out of their way, but they'll make it work. Others will go to websites, which sometimes can be a bargain, and sometimes will send you mystery shit. And there are those who may end up turning back to the addictions they have been fighting so hard to get away from. If you are worried about kratom and its effects on our community, then please first address the reason why kratom is so prevalent and why people need it, and help them first. Don't let them be the cost for an easy ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Seeing no one. We're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is number 10, our regular formal agenda. 10A is Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Amendment Public Hearing, Resolution Amending the Current Budget for Fiscal Year Ending June 20th, 2025, June 2025. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome. We don't get to see you very often here.
We do. This is my first time. So, Angie Ogden, Budget Management Analyst. I have the FY25 budget amendment. So our FY25 budget was originally approved on April 16th, 2024. It runs from July 1st through June 30th. Our city policy allows for amendments in the following situations, and those are listed there for you. We can amend anytime other than the last 30 days of the fiscal year, and Iowa City usually averages two amendments per fiscal year, one now and one again late spring when we do next year's budget. The carryforwards requests are from the FY24 budget. They're submitted by the department and reviewed by the City Manager's Office and Finance Department. The budget policy that carryforward must be $5,000 or 1% of division budget or has already been on order. Capital improvement projects, budget carryforwards, and CIP usually aligns more with the calendar year versus the fiscal year and our multi-year projects. And lastly, there are other miscellaneous amendment items. So for this year, the revenues, intergovernmental revenue is 9.9 million. That's generally your state and federal grants on CIP carryforwards. 32.2 million on other financing resources, which is the wastewater CIP revenue bonds. And then lastly, we got miscellaneous CIP reimbursements of 1.87 million, or 1.8 million, The expenditure side, we have governmental capital projects at 38 million. The major CIP projects in this is going to be your Dubuque Street Reconstruction, your Gilbert Street Bridge replacement, and the Terrell Mills Skate Park. At 63.7, we have business-type enterprises. The major CIPs there are your wastewater digester gas improvement projects, the landfill equipment building, and the transit facility. And then lastly, community and economic development at 15.5 is your carryforwards of CDBG Home and the ARPA funds. So to wrap it up, that's our first amendment for FY25. The overall impact is a decrease of 74.7 to the fund balances. This is covered through excess fund balances and bonds and will not affect any property tax levies. Any questions?
I feel like I need to ask a question, Angie, since you said it was your first time, so. Thank you very much for the presentation and for what's in our packet. Can you just explain what the "carryforward" means? So when we see that overall budget impact and looking at the packet, it looks like most of that is the "carryforwards." Can you just explain that term?
So there are things that have already been planned for, that maybe not have been paid for. We're just going to carry them over for the next year.
And the money was sitting there in the prior fiscal year?
It's already allocated, yep.
Carries forward. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Kelly, I can't see anyone. Okay, great. Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Dunn.
Second. Alter.
Counsel discussion.
We have staff to do this, because it's complicated.
It is. Roll call.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 10B, Short-Term Permit for Use of Right-of-Way. Ordinance Amending Title 16, Entitled Public Works, Chapter 2, Entitled Streets, Sidewalks and Public Right-of-Way. Article A, Entitled Streets, Sidewalks and Public Right-of-Way Generally. Section 7, Entitled Permission Required, Public Right-of-Way to Establish or Permit for Short-Term Use of the Right-of-Way. This is the second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Dunn.
Second.
Seconded by Mo. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. 10C, Establish Administrative Rules for Parking Permits and a Citation for Parking Permit Violations. Ordinance Amending Title 9, Entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 5, Entitled Parking Meter Zones and Parking Lots. Section 4, Entitled Use of Parking Lots to Allow for the Establishment of Administrative Rules for Parking Permits to Be Enforced by a Parking Permit Violation Citation. Staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Dunn.
Second.
Mo.
Seconded by Mo. And anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Counsel, I did not give you opportunity to speak, but could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Bergus. She's getting favored tonight. Counsel discussion.
You don't even know.
No.
Roll call, please.
Bergus?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item 10D, Downtown Parking Meter Rates and Evening Weekend Parking Permits. Ordinance Amending Title 3, Entitled Finances, Taxation and Fees. Chapter 4, Entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties. Section 8, Entitled Parking to Establish the Rate for Evening and Weekend Parking Permits to Decrease Meter Rates and Establish a Fine for Parking Permit Violations. This is the second consideration, and staff is requesting expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Moved by Dunn.
Second.
Mo.
Seconded by Mo. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
No.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Dunn?
No.
Motion passed at six to one. We are at item number 11, Council Appointments. 11A is Public Art Advisory Committee. We only have this appointment tonight, and that is for art or design professional. And we had four or five applicants.
And just for the record, Your Honor, Counselor Mo is recusing himself for conflict with some of the applicants.
Great, thank you. All right, council discussion.
Hadn't felt Danta and Davies all stood out to me.
Danta. I like Danta.
That's a good candidate, so.
Yeah, there were a lot of good people, and I was amazed at the folks that actually were born here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a few of those.
That's a rarity sometimes. I can, I mean, I, we had a slew of great applicants, so I can support Danta as well. Sophia, Sophie?
Sophie.
Mm-hmm.
Sophie.
Sophie Danta, yeah.
Okay, all right. Could I get a motion to appoint Sophie Danta to the Public Art Advisory Committee?
Seconded.
Moved by Saleh, seconded by who?
Me.
All right. Dunn? All right, I didn't know where the voice came from. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes six to zero. We're at item number 12, Announcements of Vacancies Previous. We're at item number 12, Announcements of Vacancies Previous. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, HVAC Professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're at item number 13, which is City Council Information.
Can I just ask why the motion was six to zero?
Because he wasn't in.
I recused myself.
He recused himself. And he stepped out of the room.
I didn't even notice that, I'm sorry.
No.
It's like a ninja over there.
Yes.
Yes. Makes sense. All right.
I would add, just, I'm just going to read her the same thing that I said last time. COVID vaccines and flu vaccines are out, and everyone should get one if you can.
Quick little plug for, Jody and I went to Will and Harper, the new documentary with Will Ferrell and his friend Harper. Harper grew up in Iowa City and was a writer on Saturday Night Live at the same time that Will Ferrell was a star, one of the stars of the show. And then sometime around the COVID years, Harper transitioned. And so the documentary is a film of them. Basically, it's a road trip movie that starts in New York and ends in California and along the way stops in Iowa City. And so there's some Iowa City places that you might recognize from there, but also it's a amazingly touching story, and I would highly recommend. I think it might only be at Film Scene for a couple more days. I was trying to look it up, but I haven't found it yet. But it will be on Netflix documentaries. And it's kind of cool seeing this story about an Iowa City kid who grew up, moved away, and has had this really interesting and amazing life and journey.
I also have an announcement of like African Festival of Art and Culture. This is the first time going to happen. This is amazing. So on September 28th, Saturday, 12 to 9:00 PM, at the Bed Mall, of course. So please, public, everyone, come and enjoy great food, music, dance, and a lot of good stuff. So please don't forget that. Mark your calendars. This is going to be a great event. Thank you for City of Iowa City or for supporting it. And yeah.
I'm sure everyone's well aware, but we are 48 days to an election. So go get registered to vote.
All right, we're going to move on to item number 14. Report on items from our city staff, City Manager's Office.
Well, it's 6:30. I don't really know what to do with the rest of my night. So indulge me for a minute or two. I'm going to brag on our staff a little bit. So we're really proud of the fact that we got the pro housing grant award. And I think we told you before, there were 175 communities that applied for this award. First time HUD's ever offered it. And we were one of 21 communities to receive that. And this week, as the team was talking to the HUD rep and navigating the grant agreement process, they let us know that we were one of the top two scoring applications across the entire country. I get zero credit for that because I did no work. But this gentleman sitting over here, Kirk Lehman, was the lead as he was an NDS, and he had a lot of support from the awesome NDS team, many of whom were in the audience earlier tonight. So kudos to Kirk and the team. And I think at your next council meeting, you'll have, you'll be asked to approve a second pro housing grant. They're doing a round two. They've encouraged recipients from round one to apply again. So we'll give it our best go, but certainly just celebrating the fact that we received the 3.75 million with the first round.
Wow.
Now it's 6:35, I feel a little better.
City attorney.
Well, I have something as well to try to stretch this meeting out. Just kidding. Lest I be shamed by the city clerk two meetings in a row, I will point out that the Charter Review Commission is having their public input session on Saturday, September 28th, at 10:30 AM. That'll be right here in Harvett Hall. The Charter Review Commission would really love to get more public input. They've been craving that throughout this process, and so they'd like to hear what the public has to say about our charter. We only do this once every 10 years, and so it's a great opportunity for your voices to be heard. Having said all of that, I will not be able to make it myself. I will be at the International Municipal Lawyers Association Conference in Florida. We kind of rotate through our office for who attends. We usually send one person each year, and it has fallen to me this year. So I will be there from the 25th through the Saturday, the 28th. I'll be getting back pretty late on Saturday. That's all.
I have a question for that. How appropriate for us to engage and also give recommendation during a meeting?
How what, sorry?
Like, is that okay?
Oh, is it okay for council members to engage with the Charter Review Commission?
Yeah, because they owe it to the public, so feedback, right?
Yes.
Can we give feedback or no?
You may. Of course, you will be wearing a member of the public hat.
Yes.
And not giving direction to them, of course. As you know, the recommendations that come from the Charter Review Commission, an independent body, come to the council eventually for you to either adopt or not. And so, but I've informed the Charter Review Commission in response to a question from them on that very topic. And I said, yes, council members may come to your meetings, they may speak, and that's fine.
Sure.
And that's 10 o'clock or 10:30?
10:30, yeah, 10:30.
And then go to the Bed Mall.[1702.86]